Okay, it's 5:30 PM time for the regular meeting of the McCook City Council to begin. The roll call shows all council members are here tonight. And we have a copy of the open meetings. That's back there by the front door if anybody would like to check that. And we're going to have an invitation.
Thank you, we need to start the meeting. Sorry. Too much, too much talking going on. Go ahead, please, nobody paying attention.
Okay, Dr. Ray Walters, Walter Reyes here with the McCook Baptist Church to do our invitation tonight. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, my pleasure. My prayer is, Hail my Father, we come together to conduct the business of people, guide and direct their attitudes, our words, our thoughts. But will we displace having done the best we could possibly do for the community, for each other, and for you, in Christ's name? Amen.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any announcements or press conferences tonight?
Just have two. We will have a planning commission meeting next Monday night. And there will be two items for discussion at that meeting. We have a special exception request. Then also will be a redevelopment plan for a planning commission to consider. And that'll be at 5:15 on the 8th April. And then secondly, just wanted to notify the council. I know that Mayor Taylor, Matt Sainer, Tara, they received notice that we were awarded the CCCFF grant for McCook Creative District Planning Project. And I just wanted to say good job. Those out to Matt Sainer, Ron DeGraff, MBC, the Graff Chairable Foundation, McCook Community Foundation, McCook Community Foundation, the City of McCook. It's kind of exciting, the five entities are going in together, $20,000 apiece to make that match of $100,000 for the grant. So, and that'll be used on the planning side just to determine what we want to downtown or what way. So, looking forward to beginning discussions.
Congratulations, McCook.
Yeah.
That's wonderful.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the request from Rose Westcamp to move a house owned by Michael and Linda Nielsen from 409 West First Street to 71823 Road 386. Said property located outside the city limits of McCook, Nebraska, within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction.
So move, then ask the city attorney to act as the hearing officer.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Anything, is all those in favor vote yea, opposed, nay?
I vote in cash, Jay, no votes cast, nay.
All right, there are three exhibits being offered for this public hearing. Exhibit number one is the city manager's report insisting on one page. Exhibit number two is a notice of public hearing, one page. Exhibit number three is structure moving application. That's 25 pages. I'll accept exhibits one through three into evidence. Take comments from city staff or applicant before opening up to public comment. Nate?
Thanks, Daniel. Probably about a month ago or so, it might have been two months now, there was a special exception that was granted to the hospital along with the variance to allow for the new construction of a multifamily building at 409 West First Street, McCook. Since that time, current owners, which would be Michael and Linda Nielsen, they have entered into a contract with Rose Westcamp with respect to the house itself, not the lot, but the house. And I believe Ms. Westcamp's plan is to purchase the house and then she would move it from its current location out to 71823 Road 386. And so, as part of the process, we've got some requirements in our ordinance that need to be followed, which Ms. Westcamp did a good job of going through, working with Barry Murray in the building department to make sure we've got all the information that we'll be contacting the appropriate utility companies to ensure that we wouldn't have any issues during the course of the move. She compiled her packet, she returned it to the city of McCook. We've had a chance to take a look at it and all ended up seeing anything that would create any complications. I can turn it over to Ms. Westcamp, you can kind of talk about the project.
Thank you, Nate. After speaking with the hospital and that type of thing, they were very excited that the house would not be torn down. They're also saving some money in demolishing costs and that type of thing. We're all working together beautifully, it's really, really nice. They're going to be taking, I believe they take possession May 15th. So, I had everybody lined up to dig a hole and bring it on mediation and everything else and firmly believe that I'll have a foundation to put the house on. We have the mover lined up, all four utility companies have measured the lines. It's a very small house. It's under 20 feet tall at the tallest peak. And so, most of your utility lines are at least 21 and above. So, I don't know that there's even a single line, there might be one cable line we have to cut. And they said they would do that prior to. And we would take it down West First, down B Street, north on 83 to 719, and then over to 386. So, it's, you know, line everybody up at TJ's Fun Center and make a parade out of it if you want to.
That sounds good.
Any questions for our advocate?
Do we know the date and time yet?
That all, it's all contingent. I can take possession after May 1st. The hospital takes possession after May 15th. And they said, we're going to work with you, we don't have anybody coming in on your heels. So, if there is, you know, a rainy week or something like that, of course, it's like planning a wedding, you got to find, you know, all four utility companies and the mover, the mover's very flexible, he's out of grants. So, but everybody has said, I've given them plenty of notice. And they typically require, you know, a week's final notice. And we'll have plenty of, plenty of time with that.
Somewhere in your paperwork, it was indicated the state patrol has to take control of the transportation.
Anything on, state patrol is B Street since it's a highway and 83. And then it's county if we need one. But Star Movers also has the 48-foot light bars on all other vehicles. And they will have a lead car that goes in front of the moving vehicle.
That's one of my concerns is the availability of the state patrol. If that's going to cause you one myriad of headaches with this is their availability, if that's going to cause issues.
And they said, as soon as we got approval from the city to contact them, they can put it on their schedule and that type of thing. So, I also, I don't know that it's absolutely mandatory, but maybe preferred. I'm not real clear on that.
Just, my only concern obviously is, we don't do it at due time on a Wednesday.
Oh, no, no.
So that's why I get worried about state patrol availability is how much of that going to hamstring you.
We might even be able to do it on a weekend. So, if you would prefer a weekend, you know, it's all, but then that's contingent on the utility companies too.
That's the only questions I have.
Yeah, the company that you're using, I think they did the last one. Last move, I don't remember until I think it was the property that was a corporate debris once it got moved over to Northport. And I think that was the same company, so they're familiar with McCook.
They're good.
I don't think they'll be in issue as far as that goes.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Are you going to get anything from the audience, Mr. Muschek?
Any, any comments from the audience?
Just asking.
Hearing that, I recommend reconvene.
I move to approve the request from Rose Westcamp to move the house owned by Michael and Linda Nielsen from 409 West First Street to 71823 Road 386. Said property located on the limits of the McCook City. City of McCook, Nebraska, within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor vote yea, opposed, nay. Do you see anything?
I think a little bit, let's try to get there. There you go. Okay.
Thank you, Rose.
Cash Jay, no votes cast, nay.
Thank you. Thank you. I promised my dog he could climb with the chickens out on the farm and as slow as we're moving with all the projects, this was the only way I saw that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the proposed incentive plan for construction of housing in the municipality targeted to house existing or new workers for the city of McCook. The incentive plan, which plan would authorize the use of tax increment financing for the construction of workforce housing in the redevelopment areas of the city of McCook? Do we have a motion?
I'm just asking, just for sheer curiosity, did we come out of the last public hearing to reconvene as a city council?
No, because I do not have that on the agenda.
Oh, okay. So we don't really need to recess as the council are already in?
We're already in, we're already in, so we need to.
I think they just recessed. Now we need to vote on the actual motion. Right?
All right.
Did you, was the vote taken to come out?
No, we did not.
So you voted before you came out, so I would do it again. I'd vote to come out and then take another vote.
Don't mean to be such a strict parliamentarian, but.
I caught it too, Jerry.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah.
So we need to come out?
Yes, and I do not have this on the agenda, so we'll have to do it. We have to be a green light.
But if it's not green light, so. You can't come out.
A green or red light.
I move to reconvene as a city council.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to reconvene as a city council. All those in favor vote yea, opposed, nay.
Five votes cash, Jay, no votes cast, nay.
Okay.
Do we have to vote again?
Have you got a vote to add?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Do we need to remake the motion or go with, with Jerry did?
Just make the motion again and then refer to that previous vote.
Okay, you make the motion and I second.
Let's go back to it so I don't screw it up. I move to approve the request from Rose Westcamp to move a house owned by Michael and Linda Nielsen from 409 West First Street to 71823 Road 386. Said property located outside the limits of the city of McCook, Nebraska, within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction.
And do your previous vote, is that how you currently want to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead and move on.
Okay. What he said.
Okay, so when you, we need to come, have a motion and we come out of this next public hearing too, because it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, we'll get the motion.
So now we're ready for the incentive plan, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, I move to recess as city council and convene a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment with respect to the proposed incentive plan for construction of housing in the municipality targeted to house existing or new workers for the city of McCook. The incentive plan, which plan would authorize the use of tax increment financing for the construction of workforce housing in the redevelopment areas of the city of McCook? And ask the city attorney to act as the hearing officer.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor vote yea, opposed, nay.
I vote cash Jay, no votes cast, nay.
There are six exhibits being offered for this public hearing. Exhibit number one is the city manager's report, that's one page. Zip number two is a notice of public hearing, one page. Zip number three is the certified mailing addresses for notice of public hearings mailed. That's five pages. Zip number four is the city manager's report of the April 1st, 2024 McCook City Council meeting, approving resolution 2024-05, adopting and approving a workforce housing incentive plan pursuant to the Nebraska Community Development Law, one page. Zip number five is a workforce housing incentive plan for the city of McCook, Nebraska, five pages. Exhibit number six, resolution number 2024-05, workforce housing incentive plan, that's three pages. I'll accept exhibits one through six into evidence. Take comments from city staff before opening up to public comment. Nate?
Recently, we've been approached by some developers requiring whether or not the city of McCook allowed TIP for workforce housing projects. And I was not very familiar with that as a qualifying use. So, we spoke with our attorney, Andrew Willis, and kind of went through the steps in the Nebraska Development Law just to make sure that if we were to do so, we were following the correct steps. And it is a fairly recent piece of legislation that was passed and adopted that allows for workforce housing to utilize or to be considered as a qualifying expense for tax increment financing projects. Prior in time, the projects that you have typically seen were projects related to commercial ventures where items were addressed through the use of TIP that would be related to blight and substantial designation that had already been received. I always told people the easy rule of thumb was to say, okay, if there is a public purpose for the project, then it probably qualifies for tax increment financing. And so, it may go towards, I don't know, dirt moving, you know, at a site that needs to see some improvement. Or it could go towards sidewalk expansion, or it could go towards utility extensions. But it's typically something that's going to be an exterior project that receives qualification under the Nebraska Development Law. In the last couple of sessions, the legislature wanted to make sure that it was extended out to workforce housing projects, primarily because we all know the state of Nebraska has a shortage of workforce housing options. And as defined, workforce housing is typically, for purposes of the state of Nebraska, it's going to be houses that are valued at $300,000. I should say that cost them more than $300,000 per unit. Or if it's a rental housing unit, it'd be $235,000 per unit. So I think we flex ourselves on one of those lines. Or to be used for, as a rental property. So, kind of going through the Nebraska Development Law, in order to have these kind of projects considered as TIP eligible projects, an incentive plan has to be adopted by the council via resolution. And there were four things that need to be included in that incentive plan or that need to be included in order to make sure that workforce housing is an eligible expense. First, there has to be a housing study that was completed within the past 60 months, which that was done in 2022. MBC actually was the entity that completed the study and would utilize that for various projects since that time. The second thing that needs to occur is an incentive plan needs to be prepared for the construction of housing in the city of McCook targeted at housing existing or new workers. And the incentive plan is in front of you for review. And then you have to have the public hearing to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak on the incentive plan. And then fourth, after the public hearing, the council has to find through resolution that the plan is necessary to prevent the spread of blight and substantial conditions within the city of McCook. That's going to provide sufficient city and suitable housing for individuals and families employed in the city of McCook and will not result in the unjust enrichment of any individual or company, which that will be determined based upon the redevelopment plan. There's going to have to be a schedule that's completed to ensure that there is. And unjust enrichment, you know, it's one of those things where you have to take a look at the project, figure out exactly what would be a fair return on investment. The council will make those decisions with each plan as they come forward and then determine whether or not that meets the standard that will be accepted throughout the state. And so, we actually spoke with Andrew Willis about that last week, the TIP attorney. He said, yes, I can help out with that to make sure that we always meet that criteria. So, going through, looking at the incentive plan, like I said, we've got our working, our housing study that has been included in here. It's going to extend to workforce housing. The eligible area is going to be within a redevelopment area that's been approved by the council. We have to show that there's a necessity for the incentive plan to occur, obviously. And when you look at our need for housing, it's pretty clear that this is an area that we need to make sure to address. As I mentioned, there could be no unjust enrichment. And then obviously, as far as it fit, it's got to fit the city of McCook. And so, these will be brought forward to the council on a case by case basis and then the council will make a determination. We'll still use the redevelopment plan process. There'll be a redevelopment contract that will be forwarded to the CDA for approval. Council will approve that as well too. That part's the same. But because this is a standalone, allowable use, TIP use, with its own set of rules, we just need to make sure that the council passes this incentive plan to ensure that we're in compliance with state law.
Any questions for city staff before I open it up to public comment? Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Come on up, introduce yourself.
I'm Amanda Engel, I'm the Director of Housing Development at the MBC. So, I've been in conversation with Nate on this utilization of TIP for workforce housing. I became aware of it last year in speaking with other communities. We all know, as you mentioned, about housing, that we have to be creative in our approach to how we're going to solve this issue that is statewide and countrywide. And our legislation has, you know, come out with this as a creative approach. And as I'm speaking with developers across the state or builders locally, you know, everybody is always asking, well, what can you do to help us? How can, and how can we help you? And this is an additional tool in McCook's tool belt that will be of benefit to the community and entice builders to want to build within McCook. And we have already seen some interest, as Nate had alluded to, through our discussions of bringing this up for topics. So, I hope that you consider it. As Nate mentioned about our housing study, the majority of the need that our housing study identified is for workforce housing. So, we are, I'm always actively working to look at how we can better our workforce housing situation. We have a rural workforce housing fund that we're actively utilizing right now and hope to be continuing to use in perpetuity. But again, this would just be a really beneficial tool in the city's tool belt that can be used by builders and developers that want to build within McCook.
Yeah, we're seeing some positive momentum, but we've got a lot more that we need to do. And if you read that study, it's clear we're short probably about 170, 180 units.
Yeah, 187.
187 units, so. So it's one more tool that we can use.
Thank you, Amanda.
Any other public comment? Hearing that, I recommend we, well, before we leave, before we leave the public hearing, usually when I do my own exhibits in preparation for a city council, I do it myself without referencing Elian's marked exhibits. This time when I did it, I actually misnumbered them. There are actually only five exhibits being offered. I'm going to redo those. Exhibit number one is a notice of public hearing. Exhibit number two is a certified notices mailed to the required public entities. Exhibit number three is the city manager's report. Exhibit number four is a proposed workforce housing incentive plan. Exhibit number five is a proposed resolution. All right, now we can reconvene.
I move we recess the public hearing and reconvene as a city council.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion and a second to recess as a city council and to reconvene, recess the public hearing and reconvene as a city council. All those in favor will be with the lights. We got to do it with the lights.
Yes, we don't know.
I vote cash Jay, no votes cast, nay.
I move to approve resolution number 2024-05, adopting and approving a workforce housing.
Yeah.
Incentive plan?
I don't think.
Incentive. Thank you, incentive plan. Looking at that really weird, pursuant to the Nebraska Community Development Law.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion and a second, is there any discussion, council further? Okay, all those in favor vote yea, opposed, nay. Okay. I'm blocked out.
Lights again.
I vote cash Jay, no votes cast, nay.
Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is approved on one motion. Any item listed on the consent agenda made by the request of any single council member or public in attendance be considered as a separate item under the regular agenda. Does anybody have anything?
No, you're right.
Staff? Public? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda as is.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as is. All those in favor vote yea, opposed, nay.
I vote cash Jay, no votes cast, nay.
On to the regular agenda, let's have an update regarding the swimming pool project.
I'm going to pass this over to Tara, I wasn't able to make the last meeting for others, so.
Hi Tara.
Hi. Okay, so they said that they had 22 of 26 pool walls and 26 of 30 pool slabs completed. They've been doing a lot of work for the bathhouse. They formed and poured slabs, completed under slab plumbing and electrical and are installing the above grade piping. They've also gotten a block for the bathhouse and they are, it is ready for installation. I know that Mason was supposed to be here last week. I assume that they've started that now too. They have started the gutter piping and deck piping, drain piping, installed piping for a family slide and the features. Escated the manhole and ran backwash winter drain piping for the manhole. Formed a diving stand pad, formed and poured drain wall north of the filter building and they have started on slide formations. So lots of work being done.
On schedule?
On schedule, yeah.
Well, and, you know, we've talked about, yeah, we've talked about this. I mean, they're, they're working as hard as they can, but also it's probably going to be beyond that Memorial Day timeframe. We just need to be, you know, realistic just based on where they're at right now. It's just going to take about a month probably to get the building built. And there's going to be some other things they're going to have to do as well too. And then the curing period. So after everything is set, there's going to have to be a period of time where everything cures. So, so my hope is to have it done as quickly as possible. You know, we do plan on having a summer swimming season. We don't know exactly when that's going to be. We are advertising more white cards, we're advertising. I know we're looking at trying to get a pool operator. There are a lot of things that we're working on as far as training. I know that the YMCA is going to work with us to help that. But we can only move as fast as construction allows it to progress, so. But we can only move as fast as construction allows it to approach, so.
Nate, so you know the Masons are planning on setting a cornerstone? Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, 'cause they've asked me for names and addresses and that, well.
Yeah, yeah, and I actually spoke to Steve Line last week. And so, we have a list of things that I know that we're gonna be doing on our end to make sure that we get the proper recommendations out, ensure that the cornerstone reeds exactly the way that it should. We actually got email and picturing work in today, just basically asking for what we want that to look like as far as the dedication. So, it's on a Saturday if I remember correctly.
It's Saturday, is it the 19th or 18th?
I can see.
18th.
The 18th, yeah.
Okay.
Just wanted to get that on the phone.
Okay, great. Anything else?
Can't think of anything else. If anybody knows anybody that wants a lifeguard, please, preferably not me. Well, that's the big thing, I think, right now is, you know, we need to find some people. So, I've approved my daughter, I told her that she needs to go out and search some people, but I'd ask if we might do the same thing as well, too, so.
Next item on the agenda then, unless there's anything else. Ordinance number 2024-379, amending the City of McCook's Code of Ordinances by removing Chapter 93 and amending sections 95.01, 95.02, 95.03, and 95.04 in the title, what, nine?
Title nine.
General Regulations. I introduce ordinance number 2024-379 by title and ask the clerk to please read the title.
An ordinance in the City of McCook, Nebraska, amending the City of McCook Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter 93 entitled, and licensed vehicles in its entirety, amending Chapter 95 entitled, nuisance, health, and sanitation, sections 95.01 defined, 95.02 specific nuisances, 95.03 abatement services and notice procedure for nuisances, and 95.04 jurisdiction. Remind that this section should be made a part of the City of McCook Code of Ordinances, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Ordinance number 2024-3079 has been introduced, read by title, and I move to approve upon its first of three readings.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I think it was probably back in November, Amber Keskey from West Central was present and we discussed about the possibility of having West Central assist us, assist us with our nuisance abatement issues. The city has undertaken that solely as its own responsibility for as long as I can remember. And we've had successes, but also, it's a very difficult road to hoe sometimes. This last year was extremely complicated just because of the weather and whatnot. The City of McCook still wants to continue to operate its health board process. We wanna have some autonomy with respect to nuisance abatement issues. But also, we understand that there are some districts in McCook that really could use some additional assistance. And I know that West Central has basically said, yes, they can help out with some of that. Basically, what they do is they take a district, they'll break McCook up into districts, they will take a district and then we will continue to provide services in the other districts. So, if we get phone calls or whatnot, the other district will handle that. But they're gonna have an officer assigned to a particular district and that officer will work that district's nuisance problems. Like I said, we know we've got some issues in various areas and we're doing the best we can to try to address that. We wanna try to make this as cost-effective as we possibly can. It's very complicated. I know that a lot of people look back to the City of McCook and say, it's your responsibility, which we do our best, I know by ordinance we can, but we can't do everything. And so, and there are some, some problem areas, and there just are. And so, our preference from our conversations with Amber when she was here and directions from the council was to try to work through an ordinance that would allow for West Central to provide some of those services. And then, we wanted to make sure that their ordinance, they sent us over a copy of their draft ordinance, we wanted to make sure their ordinance met our ordinance requirements or they were able to go ahead and be incorporated so that we wouldn't lose our ability to use the health board. And so, Tara, Debbie Thorpe, Nathaniel, myself, we went through, we reworked our ordinance to make sure that it addressed our needs, but also, West Central was adamant that our ordinance reflect how they wanna go about doing their jobs. So, it's a hybrid of our old ordinance and what's being proposed by West Central. I think that it works very well. It allows them to do their job, it also allows us to do our job. I think the big thing for the council that's gonna change is if it's a West Central project, there could be projects that would be coming to the City of McCook City Council for determination. At the health board level, that goes through the health board. So, it changes things a little bit. The ordinance is a greater ordinance, it's designed probably, you know, for, for smaller towns, I would say. And so, we had to make sure that it was functional with what we currently have as well, too, 'cause we are gonna continue to have to deal with other parts of McCook, not just, you know, one district at a time. But it's still gonna allow police to write tickets, too, if need be. It's gonna allow Mr. Musch to go ahead and prosecute nuisance abatement cases. We can still utilize the health board and the districts that won't be overseen by West Central. And then, West Central can use their preferred method with the projects that they are undertaking.
One of the other unique features of their ordinance is they give themselves the authority to write citations as well within their district that they are handling. It says that also prosecute those tickets, but they also write their own tickets. So, I don't know how that'll work with our police department, but I thought that was unique, too.
Extensively, they have that authority and.
Yeah, we're working with the authority to do so. This, this, their document gives them the authority to do so.
Other municipalities use that system already.
Yes.
Bryant was city village attorney for Trenton, they used to do it that way, and Stratton, they used to write their own tickets, too. So, yes, it can be done.
And Nate, you and your staff are gonna determine the districts?
They are going to give us, they've already given us a, a proposed district. It's just kinda drawn out roughly. We need to go through it with them and make sure that we're on the same page. And then, yeah, they'll get assigned that particular district. And we're gonna kinda do it based upon demand that we're seeing on our end. You know, obviously, like I said, we had a lot of phone calls this last year and tried to address the concerns and the issues. I mean, it became almost a full-time job in itself. I know Debbie, that's all she did, was nuisance abatements. And so, I think that we probably need to give them one of the more difficult districts and we'll continue to operate the other districts. I think it'd be helpful for us, 'cause it would take some of the stress off of Debbie and myself and, and everybody that deals with the nuisance abatements on a regular basis, so, police department.
Any other questions?
I know, your honor.
Are you ready for the question? All those in favor vote yea, opposed nay.
Five votes, Cash Jane, no votes, Cast May.
Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-378, amending the City of McCook's Code of Ordinances by adding Chapter 121 entitled, Games of Skill, to Title IX Business I introduce ordinance number 2024-378 by title and ask the clerk to please read the title.
An ordinance of the City of McCook, Nebraska, to amend the City of McCook Code of Ordinances by adding Chapter 121 entitled, Games of Skill, to the section, to Title XI Business Regulations to remind that this ordinance shall be made a part of the City of McCook Code of Ordinances, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Ordinance number 2024-3078 has been introduced, read by title, and I move to approve upon its first of three readings.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor vote yea, opposed nay, and we'll have discussion.
So, this kinda goes back to the past few years. Our auditor has mentioned on numerous occasions that we need to diversify our revenue sources. And obviously, with what we've seen out of Lincoln here this past year, with some of the changes that are potentially coming down the pipe, especially with property tax, it kinda changes the way that we look at things here. Our concern is if you start capping property tax, it makes it fairly difficult for us to adjust or continue to provide the services that we currently provide without finding other revenue sources. And so, one of the things that we've talked about is looking at new occupation taxes. Currently, we have an occupation tax, a most recent one was actually on hotels, I think we did that in 2018, if I remember right. But we also have other occupation taxes, telecommunications, gas, there's some other ones this week, too. Looking at kind of trends and where things are going and kinda listening to what the state has been saying, I know that the state has looked at the games of skill as a potential for achieving a tax shift. We're actually just on a conference call, I think we sat there alone here this last week. And during the course of the conversation, you know, he had mentioned that the state senate is kinda looking at the same thing in the legislature. They're looking at trying to go ahead and make adjustments to try to reduce the property tax requests at the state level or at the local level. And one of the things that they're proposing is implementing a sales tax on the use of these machines with those proceeds then to be split up primarily for property tax, really is what they're looking at right now. So, this is a proposal, this is on first reading, you know, you know, say yes, say no, say, hey, we want you to go ahead and do some more review. But we actually looked at North Platte's ordinance to have an idea of what may be out there as far as potential games of skill ordinances. And we actually just kinda looked at it and utilized theirs, but made them so what you see in front of you is very similar to what North Platte's has. I actually had a phone call all day. The one thing that would've changed was they had a, I think it was a, oh, in the evenings they would go ahead and cut off the games of skill or being able to utilize a game of skill at one o'clock. So, they had a one o'clock curfew at night. When I was looking at it and trying to prepare for the ordinance, we moved it back to two o'clock because we had a two o'clock curfew on our liquor establishments. And so, I just thought the two minutes sense. And after speaking with Bob, he had expressed some concerns about, well, what would that mean? Because his hours of operation are 24 hours. And I said, I, I understand that. So, that's something for the council to consider. On our end, we don't know exactly how many games of skill there are in a community. I couldn't tell you exactly, I, I've seen them, but I don't know exactly how many there are. You know, that $500 unit, that's one of those things where that can be reviewed, adjusted, whatever. We can continue to take a look at this and see what that would mean as far as revenue. Now, this last year, revenue was very difficult. We got to the very end and there were a lot of things that we had to basically say we're gonna do without. And every year, we have that, but, but it's getting more and more complicated with some of the restrictions that we have. We start talking about the inflationary issues that everybody is facing, the city is no different. We've had this sort of kind of problems as far as trying to figure out, okay, how are we gonna make sure we pay for the, the needed services that have been prioritized by the city and council members in the past? It's getting tougher and tougher every year. And so, we gotta come up with some solutions here, especially if there's the possibility that we're gonna see caps on our property tax. So, that's what the driving force is. And we are open to whatever solutions or suggestions the council or the public has, but I'm gonna be honest when I say, it is going to be complicated. I think moving forward with the inflationary forces that we've seen, that we have a different set of rules when it comes to, you know, what we have. Everybody says run business or run government like a business will be easy to do if we didn't have the same, if we had the same rules, but we have different rules that we happen to abide by. Case in point, the CIR, which mandates.
So, I think, I think there is some segue kinda leading to it. The winners, if they win, we don't have, and I'll probably shoot myself in the foot here, but we don't have a way for them to report their winnings. You win X amount of dollars, say you won $2,000. We pay $2,000 and it's up to them to report their income. I think that's kinda wishy-washy, you know? Although the sales that we get on it, if we are making a profit on it, I pay income tax on it, I have to report that. And so, I think there's some segue there to say, okay, whoever wins has to pay maybe the city a certain 10 bucks on their winning. I don't know, it could add up. I think there's, I don't know if you could legally do that, but that's just a suggestion. But I would say, the, the proposal, like Nate said, it is often North Platte, I did reach out to the city of Columbus, 'cause I have a retail business there with machines, they did not pass it and they don't know when they're gonna bring that back for discussion yet. But I appreciate the time and I'm always open for private discussions, too. Just anything to help the city, we love McCook and wouldn't wanna be anywhere else.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
My name is Bob Hall, owner of Spirit Shop Bottle Shop, and Dr. Feelgood. To answer Nate's question, in October, was the last count around the state that are 37 devices in McCook. 164 in North Platte and 123 in Columbus. When I spoke to the city clerk's office this afternoon in Columbus, they, the guy I spoke with said that at the city council meeting, they had so much negative feedback on the tax and the, and the curfew, that not only did they have negative feedback, she said, from the public, they also had negative feedback from the council, that she said they dismissed it. That's 123 devices and $61,500. That's a lot of money. We're looking at a little over 15 here in McCook.
Eighteen five.
Eighteen five.
What is it, Jared?
You said 37, right?
37.
Eighteen five is what.
Eighteen five.
So, Bob, what do you think about the hours between 2:00 and 8:00? I mean, I thought you sleep at that time, but maybe not.
Well, I've been doing it for 14 months under Dr. Feelgood. The store is actually on one side, they're separated, so people can come and go as they please and, and use the skills machines. I know in North Platte, a lot of the issues where they had numerous calls. From the authorities, become, and a lot of those calls, from what I understand, were, they got a call with Casey's, well, they, they marked that down when they were using it at the city council meeting. But it wasn't, didn't have anything to do with the skilled machines. So, they had three pages of, of police reports where they were called to address where the skilled machines are, but none of the calls were for skilled machines. But they did have a shooting, I know around 8:30, a couple, two, three years ago in North Platte, in one of the parking lots, it was like 8:30 at night, 9:30. It didn't fall within the timeframe of the curfew. But they wanted the curfew in place in, in North Platte and they got it. To me... To me, due to the fact that we've had no issues whatsoever with anything, in the fourteen months that it's been open, I don't see why there's that, there'd be a need for a curfew. Or to make an ordinance on four machines when there's thirty-seven of them in the town, and the four that you're looking at proposing an ordinance on is mine machines. I feel like I'm almost started it.
As of today, how much is the state of Nebraska on these machines? Are they, you said there's legislation proposed, right?
Yeah.
But as of today, is there
It's like Nick said, we don't own the machines. People above us own the machines. They're the ones that pay the taxes. We pay the taxes on, you know, portions of what we receive, but as far as what the machines bring in, the, the state taxes, that's done by the owners or the operators.
So, they figure that into your contract though?
Huh?
They're gonna figure that into your contract, because they're not gonna pay the tax. So, make sure
No, it's already contracts. We're already in the contract.
Yeah, but they're gonna add it if you
Yeah.
Your next contract's gonna have that in there.
Oh, it's good for five years and
Right. I'm saying half of five years.
So, do you guys lease the machines? Is that the arrangement? No, they, they just place them in your place as a business?
They basically pay us the places.
Okay.
And right now, right now, the state is thirty-five dollars a machine is what you have to pay.
That you have to pay us a tax for having a place in your
You have to have the decals with the, and that's coming from the state department, and they charge thirty-five dollars per decal.
Per year?
Per year.
Okay.
That's the time.
And that's done at the first year. Now, the newspaper article said something August fifteenth is when you want to
Which that would be for the city, not for the state.
But I understand that. But to me, it'd make more sense to align the dates simply because
Can recall off the top of my head, we haven't had any complaints provided to the police department about any of the skill games, anybody having trouble with the skill games. So, mainly, it would be based on a, you know, however many complaints come in, and then it would be the time to investigate the complaint. The Department of Revenue has their own set of investigators that monitor these games. And so, I could go theoretically, take a look at how much time it would, it would take, but I think that council would prefer a more finite number than that. So, I really would say it'd be very dependent on complaint basis.
I know you're understaffed right now, so do you have to add a staff member or anything like that?
Um
Would that be
Well, as, as of right now, all our physicians are filled. We just have one that's out on medical leave. We just had one start with us last week to fill that vacancy. We do have, I should back up, we do have a vacancy for detectives. So, basically, down one, waiting on another to regain its health.
Hey, Liam. Each seven, so this last year, each seven, what is it, about fifty thousand dollars? That's not about right. So, it, yeah, so that's about thirty cents. Okay.
What is North Platte tax, their, their
Machines. What's that?
What's North Platte's tax?
Same, same, we're right, I think, yeah.
Well, they have a lot more.
They have a hundred more than
Right, yeah. Oh, yeah.
These are always complicated. I think at one point in time, when I was city attorney, I was not sitting in this chair, which was kinda nice. But we had proposed a, at council's recommendation or request, we proposed a occupation tax on cell phones. And it gets really complicated. These are complicated issues, and we had some people at ten minutes said, well, you know, that's gonna be very difficult for us. And we understand people are a big fan of whatnot. But then the council will vote at that time, they have to do that, but also reduce the land lines by one half as well too. So, so we kinda got zapped on that one as far as a revenue option. And so, so we know that occupation taxes aren't everyone's favorite. The, the hotel occupation tax is probably the easiest one for all of us to swallow because it's probably gonna impact individuals that don't live in McCook more so than anyone else. But like I said, I mean, I know we're gonna have to figure out other options and, and we've followed along with what's going on in Lincoln. I know Nick had referenced a couple of the bills that we know that are out there right now. It's just getting more and more complicated, I think. And, and on our end, and we just don't think we're going to the point where we can't provide the services that this council and other councils in the past have said, yeah, this is what we're gonna do. I prefer to be not, I, I just, I, I just don't know what things are gonna go.
So, Nick, back to you. You referenced it will be the companies that lease you the machines that will be paying the occupation tax. Is that correct?
Yeah.
It will not be you.
Yeah. Next company is different than mine. In North Platte, the big shot, the company that I live with, they split the taxes half and half.
You have a five-year contract?
Pardon?
You have a five-year contract?
Yeah.
So, they can't change it?
No.
Nick, have you heard from your company about this issue in any way at all? Have you heard how they feel about this?
I, I haven't spoke to any representative personally, though.
Bob, how about you?
As far as I know, North Platte's the only city, the only city in the state that implemented the tax and the curfew.
In the state of Nebraska?
As far as I know, yeah.
They were alone once?
The gentleman who places the machines and maintains the machines was down this morning. And we were discussing the numbers, and the numbers I gave you come off of October timeframe. And there have been no new ones added in McCook. I don't know about North Platte and Columbus, but those are the numbers from October. And he, he mentioned that as far as he knew, North Platte was the only, North Platte and he thought Columbus. But when I called the city clerk in Columbus, they said, the reason I called was because of the curfew to see if, if Columbus had a curfew, because he didn't think Columbus had a curfew. Well, after talking to the city clerk's office, they don't have the tax, they don't have the curfew anyhow.
Now, one of the things, like I said, it's so odd because every community has occupation taxes on different things. It's just strange. And, and what one community puts an occupation tax on or another community just doesn't, you know. There are other communities that have taxes, occupation tax on mechanical games and devices. Obviously, you know, we've got Keno where we take, I think, six percent, if I remember correctly, is that what we collect off of the Keno proceeds?
Right.
And so, there are a number of communities that have that. But it's just very case dependent. Everybody does things differently.
I just have a question of either Nick or Bob. They'll use, and I'm only going by what they have posted online. They say they have an occupation tax, and those are called games of profit? Is there something different between a game of profit and a game of skills? I have no idea.
I would assume it's probably more of a slot machine type, what these casinos are putting out. Those are games of profit. Games of skill are up to the user, how to figure out the puzzle versus rather than a slot machine, that's a game of chance. That's just the definition of the, I'm not a
It's a marketing term?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Bob, you're recommending that we do away with the two o'clock to the
I, I prefer it, yes.
Okay.
I mean, two o'clock in the morning, get up and, and lock the door, make sure everybody's out. And the thing about skills games that I know a lot of people don't understand is there are some of them that will pay out a certain, a certain amount. You know, there's three prizes awarded. The top prize pays out at twenty-five hundred. The, the major prize pays out at two hundred and fifty dollars. The minor prize pays out at twenty-five. Well, you've got a gentleman like in a twenty-four hour place that's on the middle, the middle prize, he's almost got two hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and forty-nine and ninety-three cents. He said, oh, two o'clock, make it out. Well, when can I come back? Well, you can come back at eight o'clock in the morning. Well, I gotta go to work, so, well, then you're out. Somebody else can win it. With the skills games, it's a lot different than, a lot of people think that they're a gambling device, but there's more to it. There's more skill to it instead of a surprise of bam, there it is.
So, who pays it? Do you guys pay out then, or does the machine pay out, or how does that work?
We pay out of the store. And then reimbursed by, well, that's part of our contract. We have percentages that we obtain from the game, just like any other profit percentage that you would operate your store. Whatever you make on a candy bar, that's your profit percentage, but they're not in on the game candy bar. They're in on the game, so you share profits together.
At the spirit shop and the bottle shop, we pay at the counter in cash. Dr. Philgood, we've got to pay some of the water. You insert the ticket, and it inserts the cash too.
And I'm assuming you have security cameras all the way around here twenty-four seven? If you're having to pay out right then, you have someone walking out with two to five grand in cash. Is there security cameras to be able to monitor that?
Monitor the pay center or?
Well, if they're playing there at three o'clock at night, they hit a two thousand, you know, where they're walking out with significant sum of cash. How is that being monitored? Because it looks like that'd be a great chance to rob someone coming up.
Surveillance cameras outside, outside all the way around. And we've had no issues with any of that.
Okay, I appreciate you bringing this to the council. We know that we're gonna come up into some rough times coming into our budget, and this is one of the aspects for us to look at. I think one of the big things is, at least not at this time, it will be the people that lease the machines that's going to be paying it.
Is the five hundred dollars guys, is that a problem? Or would you, would you, if we came down, would that be easier on you?
It isn't them paying.
Huh?
It's not them paying.
Well, I know it's not them paying.
Bob pays half, right?
Yeah.
Bob pays half.
Bob pays half, yeah.
Do away with the curfew, and I don't have a problem with the five hundred.
Do away
There's another tax that, like Nick said, every time you turn around, it's a tax. And this
So, do you have a fair? What, what is fair for you guys? Do you have something?
Well, okay, so you're, we're using, my name is Jessica Myers. We're using this as a five hundred dollars. Well, there's a, for a certain amount of square footage. So, if like, for example, one owner in one location will have four machines, so that's a two thousand dollar bill versus just a five hundred dollar bill if you go per machine. So, like for example, Bob has three locations, that's six thousand dollars a year that he's gonna be splitting with his company.
Well, of course, we'd like to lower it. It's a tax. Yeah, lower it.
It's another, yeah. Here, you ready for the question? This is on first reading. And if you want more information
I'd like more time to think.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would, I kinda wanna see if we can figure out something then.
So, you might do it on first reading, and then there's two more readings?
Yeah, we can vote.
We can do that.
Yeah, we can vote.
Yeah. We still have two more reads, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that, I mean
That's a, that's a whole
Then we'll come back, and you guys can come back and talk to us about, okay, well, how would you like to see this changed?
Yeah.
Because we got two more readings after this, if that's all for you guys?
Okay. Okay. Okay, all those in favor vote yeah, opposed nay.
Can I not register?
Yeah, and we can show you if we want to sleep.
I, it hasn't turned on, like green lights on, everything is on, so.
Everything's on. No, I need this right here. Here, I have yours.
Okay.
I just did it.
Oh, got it now, okay. I have four votes, cash J, one vote, cash May. Okay, next item on the agenda. Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven-six, providing for the amendment of chapter thirty-eight, pending fee, water department rates and fees.
Let me ask the speaker of court, we're gonna bring this back to the next council meeting?
Yes.
On the fifteen? That's enough time to Yeah, yeah. Okay, right, thank you.
I introduce ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven-six, by title, and ask the clerk to please read the title.
The notice providing for the amendment of chapter thirty-eight, reschedule pending fee, water department rates and fees, and the city of McCook code of ordinances, providing for a rate to be charged for water by the McCook Water Department, providing for the repeal of ordinance number twenty twenty-three thirty-sixty-four, and any and all ordinances in conflict therewith provided for a time and date after which this effect can be enforced.
You have any one, or you want me to go forward? I talk a lot.
Go, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash three zero seven-six has been introduced, read by title, and I move to approve upon its second of three readings.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any more discussion?
You haven't heard anything yet.
I've heard nothing.
No, I haven't. Okay. Okay, so, all those in favor vote yeah, opposed nay.
Five votes, cash J, no votes, cash May.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven-seven, providing for the amendment of chapter thirty-eight, pending the sewer department rates and fees. I introduce ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven-seven by title, and ask the clerk to please read the title.
An ordinance providing for the amendment of chapter thirty-eight, reschedule pending fee, sewer department rates and fees, and the city of McCook code of ordinances, providing for the repeal of ordinance number twenty twenty-three thirty-sixty-five, and any and all ordinances in conflict therewith. Providing a time and date from and after which this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash three zero seven-seven has been introduced, read by title, and I move to approve upon its second of three readings.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second on the ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven-seven. Is there any discussion?
We haven't heard anything on this ordinance either.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor vote yeah, opposed nay.
Five votes, cash J, no votes, cash May.
Okay, council comments? Anybody have a comment?
Yeah, I do. Detroit's gas suspension period starts Thursday, goes from the fourth of this month to the twenty-fourth. There are ACE suppliers. I would just encourage the citizens of McCook to look into the different rates. And if it's your preference, I would hope that you would choose ACE, because ACE gives back straight to the community. This year, we got twenty thousand dollars back. So
Okay.
That's my comment.
Anybody else?
I'd like to thank the water department, Pat's guys coming out on a Sunday and fixing a water leak. They're, they're, they're done before I knew it, you know, so it was great. Thank you.
I will forward it.
Thanks.
Is that in front of North Avenue?
Yeah. Well, thankfully, it wasn't my, on my side. It was on the city's side.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then an executive session may be held upon the majority